Okay.
I want to convene the Wednesday, November 9th, meeting of the Barnstable County Commissioners. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in a moment of silence as we think about our troops that are overseas and hopefully all get back home safe and sound. Thank you very much. Now, do we have any public comment? I don't see anybody here. So, we're going to have a presentation on the pension.
And I have to say, you know, I'm the only one on the agenda and I'm deeply hurt. I really am.
That nobody pays?
That nobody's here, exactly.
Well, you ought to be glad because 30, 25 minutes from now, they're going to be evaluating.
Exactly. I guess that's true.
So, you've got to weigh the good with bad.
Be careful what you wish for. So, there's a copy of the presentation and, thank you, Mr. Chairman. What I'm giving your presentation on is something that I've been, I delivered to the town of Chatham last week, I believe, and I'll be visiting Nantucket in December. And I'm also planning on doing this, hopefully, for the Selectment Counselors Association at one of their meetings, probably after the holidays. I think they usually do a December meeting or they do something different. But anyways, I'm going to contact Diane Cooney and try to schedule that. I think this will be good. So, what I'm going to talk about a little bit today is an overview of the pension system. And there's really three things I want to just touch on. It's an overview of the Massachusetts system as a whole, just to give you some background on what's going on with the Massachusetts system, what it is and what it does. The Barnstable County system, which is the Barnstable County Retirement Association, and just talk a little bit about that and give you some background on that. And hello? Hello? Hello, everyone?
Yeah, you have.
Now, I have an audience.
Yeah, you have an audience.
I was saying to people I was deeply hurt, that I was the only one on the agenda if no one hears.
Sorry.
So, I just started the pension presentation. I'm just on the first slide, the agenda slide. So, and you need me to copy this, David?
Any summary of actions you'd like to take.
So, I'm just going to be talking a little bit with an overview of the Massachusetts system as a whole, just to give you an idea of where we fit in it. And I'm going to talk about the Barnstable County system, the Barnstable County Retirement Association, and give you a brief overview of that system. And then I'll talk a little bit about our investment, investment performance through 6:30, 11:00, and then I'll just touch on the pension reform a little bit. So, first of all, on the Massachusetts system, the Barnstable County system is one of 105 contributory retirement systems within the Commonwealth. All of the units on Cape Cod are part of the Barnstable County system, except the town of Falmouth. They're, they're on their own retirement system. That's one of the 105. The retirement system is governed by Chapter 32 of the General Laws. It provides the kind of basis for the retirement plan, establishes the benefits, the contribution requirements, and the accounting for all 105 systems. And it's probably one of the most complex and adjudicated pieces of the general laws out there. We have to appear before, or council appears before, GALA, the Division of Administrative Law Appeals, CRAB, the Contributory Retirement Appeal Board, Superior Courts. And so, it's a very adjudicated section of the law. All the retirement systems are administered by boards, which are consisting of five members. And our oversight is by PARAC, the Public Employees Retirement Administration Commission. That's a state agency. Just so you know, prior to 1988, the retirement appropriations were on pay-as-you-go system. As employees retired, the towns would begin to contribute to their retirement. So, what that did, of course, was up to that time, created a huge unfunded liability. That's quite a bit about what you hear about in the news. But there's a reason that that unfunded liability is there is because it wasn't being funded, so to speak, before 1988. So, then in 1987, the state legislature did pension reform, which required systems to be fully funded within four years. At that time, your funding schedule was up to 2028. They've since amended that and allowed retirement systems to do their funding schedule out to 2040. That was passed as part of a municipal relief package in 2010. And you'll see employee contributions were repeatedly increased. Employers are now also required to make a scheduled payment, which is the assessment or the annually required contribution towards the unfunded liability based upon evaluation of the retirement system, funding schedule. We put together a funding schedule. That's a really important point because a lot of the things you hear about pension systems, especially in the national news, about how systems are unfunded or they're financially in trouble, many of those systems aren't required. Municipalities aren't required to make their, they're not required to make their annual assessment payment. In Massachusetts, you are required to make that assessment payment, and that's a big distinction. Just to talk a little bit now about the Barnstable County system. This is the retirement board. I, as treasurer, am ex officio chairman. You know that second person on there, Mary Pat Flynn, is your appointee. Karen Wallman is the advisory board member. And the advisory board is made up of all the treasurers of all the units who are members of the Barnstable County system. There's 47 of us right now, seven units in the retirement system. All the municipalities, as I mentioned, except Falmouth, water districts, fire districts, school districts, those types of things. Randy Sharbin is an elected member. He's the former fire chief for the town of Yarmouth. And Mark Foley is the other elected member. He's the deputy fire chief in the town of Eastham. Deb Cohen is our executive director. And Jim Quirk is the retirement board council. Jim is also a selectman in the town of Yarmouth.
Recently, how do you, how do the elected members get elected? Who elects them?
The, no, the members of the retirement system have an election. And in fact, just recently, that's a very good question. There would have been an election for Mark Foley's position. He was the only candidate to take out nomination papers. So, at our last meeting, Chapter 32 allows the retirement board to declare him the elected member. And that's a three-year term.
Yeah, so kind of the way it works is, like, anybody who is a member of the retirement system comes from a...
They can take out nomination papers?
They come from a community, or they come from a school district, or they, or a fire district. And when they have elections, if from whatever your association is, or your employment or connection, is that's where you go and vote. You get a ballot?
You get a ballot in the mail.
In the mail?
It actually happened two years ago.
Oh, that's true. You can do it in the mail.
Randy was up for reelection. There was an election. There were, I think, two or three other candidates. Forgive me if I'm misstating that. And they took out nomination papers. So, then we mail out ballots to all the members, both the active members, us sitting here in our chairs, or the retirees. They get to vote. They submit the ballots back, and then the retirement system calculates the ballots. We go in and calculate the ballots.
And how many members do we have in our particular Barnstable system?
I will get to that in just a second. Just, this is sort of an important point, so people know. And it's especially important for kind of the towns and communities, boards of selectmen, town managers. Retirement board members have a fiduciary duty, and their fiduciary duty is solely in the interest of the members and their beneficiaries. I'd have to say, with the retirement board in Barnstable, we've also tried to strike a balance, recognizing that the communities, especially in the time that I've served, going back to 97, have really been under the gun in terms of the assessments. So, we've tried to take that and try to balance those, those, those needs from the point of view of the, of the communities and the unit membership. But we really are charged with discharging our duties in the interest of our members and beneficiaries. And then the rest of, this is from April 10, CMR Code of Massachusetts Regulations. There's a sort of the prudent man rule, as it's worded now, about taking care of our investments and our, our, our funding and our financials and all that. Diversifying investments and doing everything according to Massachusetts General Laws. And why this is important, it's really the ERISA standards. Those are the standards that are established for private pension systems. They don't specifically apply to public systems, but we, those are really the standards that we live up to. So, there's, to Sheila's question, we have 4,076 active members. And that started because it went down since the previous actuary that we did, and that was because some of the members transferred from the sheriff's office. So, we have 2,422 retirees or beneficiaries, someone receiving a benefit. We have 772 inactive members. An inactive member is someone who's vested in the system, has money in the system, is, may be eligible for a benefit at some time in the future. And this is an important point as well. We have an aging population, so people are living longer, they're collecting their pension longer. We have 105 people who are 90 years old and older, and that keeps going up. That goes up fairly substantially every time we do the actuary. This is about active member contributions. You know about the contribution rate. It's all based on when you started your public service in Massachusetts. Prior to 1175 was 5% contribution rate on your salary. That's since gone up. Now, everyone who's hired, everyone after 7196 is 9%. That's what most of us are, I believe, in the system now. And of course, everything, there's additional 2% compensation on all of your salary over $30,000. So, 9 plus 2, you'll hear that number sometimes. In terms of benefits, the benefit level for our Barnstable County members is $18,768. That's your average superannuation benefit. That's your normal retirement that's based on your years of service, your age, and your three highest salary years. If you factor in the average, including the disabilities, that goes up to $20,096 every year. So, it's really a modest pension. It's not the numbers that you hear in the newspaper, people getting, you know, $200,000 on a pension. That's not your average person here. We're receiving mostly a modest pension. You see 70% of Barnstable County Association retirees receive less than $22,000 in annual benefits. Again, a modest pension. And there's been a lot of studies done about who's funding those pensions that they're being paid, and how much are being paid by the employee, and how much are being contributed by the employer. Recent study done for group one, that's your normal average, most people in the retirement system are group ones, that they're funding about 75, 80% overall on their total lifetime retirement benefit. And now, just to draw this, if you just look at the normal cost, that's the cost that's computed for all the active members every year to pay for their retirement, their eventual retirement. And you look at it in terms of percentage of payroll, then the employee pays 9.2% of their payroll towards their eventual retirement. The employer only pays, pays 4.6%. And that's important because you hear a lot of talk about, well, you know, social security, we should turn to that. We're not a social security state now. We're not, public employees are not in the social security system. They don't get credit for, for the social security retirement. If you were, you'd be paying 6%. So, right now, the employer is actually paying less for the retirement than it would be if they were under social security.
Can I make a comment on that? We have, we've heard a lot recently in the press from other states, like New York or for one, where the employee, or Wisconsin, that was, I think, an issue there, where the employee has paid nothing, very little, toward their own retirement. And these are retirement systems that are crashing because they can't sustain themselves. And here in Massachusetts, it's, it's so different because the employee pays most of the, of their own retirement, as those numbers show, and the employer pays a lot less, but the employer pays something. So, and then we have, you're going into that fully funded part, too. But still, wait, you can't compare state to state. And when you hear in the national news about the, the state's finances are sinking because of their retirement, it's because they've, they've felt, given the retirement to, to the employee.
Right.
And maybe, and then they haven't funded it at all.
Right.
So, it's totally different from Massachusetts.
You were saying that if we were in the social security system, the hour, the employee rate would be 6%?
6%, yeah.
And so, would the employee cost be lower, like 7%? Or does that remain the same?
Yeah, would, uh...
Social security is the same.
Social security, the contribution that the, you know, the employee makes in social security, there's two contributions, from the employee and from the employer.
Right, it's the same percentage, right?
And they're the same, it's the same.
So, it's 6 and 6.
Oh, it's 6 and 6, okay.
So, it would be less for the employee.
Right. And a little bit more for the employer.
And, you know, this, just to go into and expand upon what Pat was saying a little bit, this was done by, this was PARAC analysis. This was given at, by Joe Conerton, who's the director of, executive director of PARAC. He gave this presentation to the Massachusetts Collector and Treasurers Association, maybe a year ago now. And it's a calculation of the contributions and the percentage of benefit paid by the employee for different hiring ages and retiring at different ages. So, what this says is if you're, spend your entire career, say, in Massachusetts public sector, you're hired at age 25 and you retire at age 65, you're paying 128% of your pension benefit. That is to say, that to the tune of 28%, you're subsidizing the system. You're paying more than your actual pension. And even for a person who's hired at age 35 and retires at age 65, you see they're paying almost 90% of their pension. Just to touch upon our investment performance, and I haven't updated this with our new last quarter numbers. There's been a bit of volatility. If you read about investments over the past four months, it's been a volatile period of time. But we had a good end of fiscal year. The quarter was up. We are in the PRET fund. That's what, Pension Reserve Investment Trust. That's the Massachusetts Investment Fund, almost to the tune of $594 million, as you see. And for the year, they were up 22.36%. I think that was their second-best performing year since their inception. So, they had a good year. ABT is a real estate fund that we were in, we were in when we moved into the PRET fund. It's, it's called the Closed-End Real Estate Fund. We couldn't get out of it, so we are still in it. But they had a good year as well, 19.32%. Intercontinental is also a real estate fund, Intercontinental IV, that is. It's a local fund. It's made up of investments in the New England area. And they actually had a pretty good year, up 9.24%. So, our total fund as of 6:30, 11:00 was 602, just over $602 million, and our total fund was up 17.18% for fiscal year. The quarter from July 1st to September was down. October was up. And then so far, I think in November, it's been down. Especially, I think, the European crisis.
You know, Greece, kind of think it was mine.
And that's something that we're watching, you know, very closely.
Pigs, pigs can't fly.
No.
Watch a dog.
Yeah, put lipstick on a pig, kind of thing.
Yeah, that's what they call it. Pigs can't fly.
This is the PRET's core app fund asset. I apologize, you can't quite see that. The point sort of being is they're really in, they really are in two big investment pieces. They call it global equity. You see where domestic equity is 22%. Global, international equity is 22%. Not too many years ago, it would be mostly domestic.
Okay, so, is that what they refer to, emerging markets?
No, see, we have a separate sleeve. If you look at, the next one down, Bill, the third bullet, I can't quite tell what that is.
Emerging markets.
It's emerging markets.
Because when I look at, you know, international funds, they usually refer to emerging markets as being foreign investments.
No, this one is, international equity is really your, your normal large cap, but international stocks. The emerging markets is the China, the Brazil, the, you know, the Far East, the rim, those types of things. Those are different, though. That's different. So, that's why they call it global equity now. It's really a global marketplace that you're investing in. And then the other significant piece of the asset allocation is, it's about 30% alternative investments, real estate, private equity, hedge funds, those types of things.
We're going to have to do a lot of that.
Yeah, the overall split really turns out to be about 87% equity-type investments, the, the international equities, global equities, and the alternatives, and only 13% the fixed income piece, the bond piece.
Have you seen any, any improvement in the return on the bond piece?
Well, the reason you're doing that is because they're not correlated. So, when stocks are up, bonds are down and vice versa. But actually, yeah, we've had pretty decent returns on the bonds. I think we've been at the 5.2% I think we were looking at over the past year. So, it's been pretty good for the bond market. And just to touch on this, because we'll get into it, long-term, the PRET funds' return on their investments has been 9.38%. We just got that number yesterday. That's since they're in, since their inception, since they started back in 88, I believe they were created and established the PRET fund, they've returned 9.38%. So, that's pretty good. That's a good number. And that has to do with one of these bullets. So, I talked about extending the funding schedule. For Barnstable County, we extend that to 2038, maximum is 2040. That gives us a couple of years if we need to, if there's a significant event in the investments, if we take a hit on investments, we still have the option to move it out a couple of years if we have to. This also gave us the ability to reduce our actuarially required rate of return. That's the amount we need to, to burn on our investments every year, and we reduced that from 8 and 1/4% to 8%. And that's important because most projections for the stock market, at least in the short term, are around that 8% number. We think long-term, it's more like 9%, but in the short term, it's really 8%. So, that gives us some cushion with our investments. We also were able to reduce the assessments to our member communities. We were actually at 3/10s. It was last year, this year, and next year are going to be 10% increases. We were able to move that down to 6% increases, and then it will be 4% annually thereafter, assuming all our investments are doing all right, there's no other significant downturns. And we were able to increase the COLA base by $1,000 per year over the next three years from its original base of $12,000, as you know, to $15,000 after the end of the three years, so.
Does it come to about $30 a year?
It's $30 a year, but it's better than a sharp, it's better than a sharp stick in the eye.
That's right.
So, it'll go from 360 on the $12,000 base to 390, to 420, to 450 over that time period. So, that was pretty good. We're happy about that. Now, just to talk a little bit about pension reform, and I will move a little bit faster for you, Bill. Pension reform's been going on, as I mentioned, in 88 and 96, they did pension reform because of some of the stories that ran in the Globe about disability pensioners who were out. I will tell you that after all of that, I think, in terms of the entire statewide system, three people were returned to work after that. So, it wasn't a significant, it wasn't as significant as maybe the front-page stories would have indicated. But the pension reform's been going on for a while. They, they did pension reform in 2009, 2010, I mentioned, and now they're looking at pension reform again in 2011, 12 legislative session. And that's what I'm going to talk about just a little bit. So, this is based on the Senate bill. I haven't had a chance to update it for the House bill that came out. There were some significant changes in the House bill. There were two provisions that were added as amendments on the floor, one of which calls for a study of consolidating all the systems into one system. And I don't know how, if that'll have legs going, coming out of Congress committee or not. I know there's a lot of concern at the local level about that. But this, what I did was I split the presentation into two pieces, one that any of the reforms that apply to current and new member, and reforms that apply only to new members, which most of the significant reforms only apply to people who would enter the system as of a certain date, and that date either being January 1 of 2012 or July 1 of 2012. It kind of varies depending on which version of the bill you're looking at. It'll vary depending on when it's passed, I'm sure, as well. So, just to say, this applies to everybody. It doubles the interest rate charged for buying back prior service. I had service with the city of Westfield when I was a young boy, working summers in college. I worked for Westfield Public Works. I could go back and buy back that service, unless I do it fast, I'll have to pay a higher rate of interest. If you are a retired official and you wish to re-enter service because you're elected to office, currently, there's no interest charge. You can buy back, you can basically pay your pension back. Right now, the new legislation will call for buyback interest on what you pay back to the system. And this would apply to all members. It would prorate service according to the years of service in each group. That is to say, if you're a group one individual and you go to work for the sheriff and you become a group four, group four has better retirement provisions because there's an assumption that your position has a higher risk. For example, firemen, police, the same way, they can retire at 55 right now. This would prorate the number of years that you've spent in each of those groups. Right now, it's the last group that you're in. That's what your pension is calculated on.
Some clarification on the, on the middle one.
Yeah.
You don't, you just can't suspend receiving a pension. You have to pay back your pension in order to, in order to be re, be elected to office.
This is in order to collect the salary from your position.
That's it.
So, you could keep your pension, be an elected official, and not draw a salary. But this would be, in order to draw the salary, assuming that's more, you would have to pay back your pension, and you, you could essentially become unretired.
No.
Go ahead.
So, you were saying, like, if you wanted to, when you were a young guy working, you must have taken that money out of the system that you had put in to Westfield?
Correct, yeah. Actually, I probably, no, I think what it was is because I was summer help. They didn't take pension out.
Oh, okay.
If they did, I would have gotten, I've already had my credible service force.
So, you'd have, you'd have that. But so, say you took that out, though.
Say I took it out. I could have done that, yeah.
Yeah, and then, and now you want to put it back in.
I could buy it back, yes.
You could buy it back in, but, and you said you have to do that quickly because there's an interest.
If this passes, right now, I would pay half of the rate that I would pay after this reform legislation passes.
And when do you think that's, when does that do for taxes?
Well, I would say that this will, I think pension reform's not going to happen. Something's going to come out. The question is, is it going to come out before the holidays or after?
Right, okay.
So, you know, if it doesn't happen in 2011, it's probably going to happen in 2012. The effective date of this may either be January 1st or July 1st, and I'm not sure.
I'm still not clear on the middle one. Previously retired officials.
Okay.
What does that mean?
So, I retire, and I'm going to collect the pension.
You're considered an official?
I'm, I'm an official right now, yes.
Can you just be a retired?
I would be a retired guy. But then, say I wanted to run for sheriff.
Mm-hmm.
That's what I would have to do. I'd have to, I can unretire.
To run for sheriff.
We've had this situation happen in...
Is there any retired involved in this?
No, names, Bill.
No, but I think, yeah, I can understand the sheriff because that's a, that's a, that's a full-time job with a salary. But what about people like us?
It's only for elected officials, remember. If you're just, if you, if I'm, if I retire today, and then I want to go work for the town of Barnstable, I'm limited to what I can do. I can only work half the time, right? But if I get elected to office, then there's constitutional provision sort of that's kicking in here. I'm elected, so, but if I want to unretire and collect my salary, I can unretire, and right now, I...
Oh, in order to work full-time?
Here's all my retirement payback, but I don't have to pay any interest on it. See what I'm getting at? Now, I'll collect my salary. But if I want to, but after the reform happens, I'm going to have to pay them back all the interest theoretically. Because theoretically, that time I was retired, if the system hadn't paid the money out, would have been earning interest. So, it's not just the principal amount that I collected over time. Now, I got to pay back interest as well. That's what I'm saying.
So, if you ran for a selectman in the welfare, for example, and you were retired, you could either collect the, because it would give you $1,000 a year.
Yes, that huge salary.
Exactly. But you wouldn't do that, of course, because your selectman salary is far less than yours.
Yeah, we probably could still do it as commissioners, if we're not that much higher.
True.
And I have to say, this is, and this is the kind of discussion that it engenders when you give it to the towns, too, this presentation to towns. So, it's very, I think it's very helpful. This, again, applies to both current and new members for pension calculations. There's sort of an anti-spiking provision that they're trying to build in. So, for the period that they're looking at for your salary, for your salary calculation, your highest, three highest years, they're limiting your increase within those years to 7% of the three-year average plus CPI on the two preceding years. I know this is a little confusing.
What does CPI mean?
Consumer price index.
Basically, yeah, CPI is consumer price. So what they're basically trying to do is take into consideration any inflation in salaries for CPI, then limit you to seven percent of the three-year average. So it's a spiking provision, because people do game the system. I know, it's a shocking thing to realize, but some people know it. It also prohibits retirees who are elected to public offices from collecting both a pension and their salary, because that does happen right now, especially for constitutional positions, constitutional elected positions. Now, this would apply to new members only. There's some of the bigger provisions, and I'm not sure exactly when this will take place, as I mentioned, in terms of the effective date. But it does increase the normal retirement age by two years, and that is for Group Ones, 65 now goes to 67, and for Group Fours, firemen, policemen, correctional officers, those types of things, goes from 55 to 57. Your normal retirement age is the point in time where the highest factor, we'll get into that, hits on your calculation. And so one of the reforms that they're doing is also to increase the rate from .1 to .15, at which that maximum age factor, the two and a half, is reduced for every year less than your normal retirement age. And there's an example of this that I wanted to walk through, because this is an important provision. So right now, under the current law, if you have 30 years of service, at 65, you would receive 75 percent of your pension, because there's the 2.5 times your 30, factor of 2.5 times your 30 years. So each year less than 65, the factor currently decreases by .1. So at 60 years, you would receive 60 percent of your pension, because the factor goes down a .1 for every year, or .5 total, so it's two times 30. Now, under the new provision, and I called it H35, that was the governor's original proposal, it's really a double whammy, because now the normal age is 67, and the factor decreases faster. So the same person, under the new law, once it's passed, who wants to retire at age 60, the factor decreases seven times, because it's seven years, not five, and the factor has decreased at a faster rate, because it's .15 instead of .1. So this time, under the new law, if you want to retire at 60 years of age, you'd get 43.5 percent of your salary. That's a significant piece, and I know it doesn't sound a lot, and people are living longer, we've said that already, but we do see it. I know, you know, at the retirement office, you do see a lot of people who are struggling to make, you know, 65, get their retirement. There are people who are struggling to get to 60, so it's a significant impact.
For those people that actually work in the system beyond 67, is there any increase in their value of their, how much they've been working on?
There's no change in your deductions or your contribution rate. What you can do is, once you reach 70, you can elect to have your contributions continued. You can do that. You have a choice at age 70. If you, and most people, we see a lot of people who continue their deductions after age 70, because if you don't, basically, you're become an inactive member. You're eligible, but if your salary increases, your salary doesn't count. You sort of end your three highest years at that point in time, and your credit card and all those things. So you see a lot of people continuing after age 70.
I guess that wasn't really my question, because at 65, it's 2.5, and it decreases, or 67, it's 2.5. Does that factor increase when you get over?
No, the factor stays the same. You max out.
So in other words, it maxes out at 67?
It maxes out at 65 now, it will max out at 67, yes. That's how you get, Bill, the calculation, once you reach a certain age, years of service, which is about 32, 33, you get to 80 percent. The pension reform for new members only changes the termination allowance provision. You hear a lot of that. What this would do essentially is, any employee with 10 or more years of service, they'd be eligible to retire at the minimum retirement age. Right now, the termination allowance allows you to get a certain benefit, as long as you have 10 years of service, no matter what your age is. So this would bring that to the minimum retirement age, age 60 for Group One, and age 50 for Group Four.
So no retirement before 60?
That's basically it for Group Ones.
So, you know, so these people who are inactive, I mean, these could be people who worked in, say, in the public sector for, say, 12 years, and then they decided to go off and work for some private company somewhere, and they're, say, they're 40 years old. So the idea is, they stay vested in the system, and then they would have to wait, they used to be able to wait till they were 55.
Right.
And then come back and exercise their retirement options. But now they'd have to wait till age 60 to do that, if they were even still eligible.
But the other part is, Jim Cork actually brought this point up at the meeting, because we were talking about this a little bit on Tuesday, and that is, really, the other thing that this may have, that may have an impact on is, instead of people retiring for superannuation at a younger age because they're ill or for whatever reason, they can't. So they're going to be pushing to get to age 60 or even to 65. Jim's fear is that, one of the unintended consequences of these things is you get more disabilities, because people get older.
Right.
They're working in, you know, physical jobs, and they can't do those jobs anymore, and they end up getting hurt. And instead of saving money by forcing people to kind of stay longer in the system, instead of leaving with a superannuation, the normal pension, they'll leave with a disability because they get hurt.
Especially if it works.
Yeah. It probably works, you know, yeah, the janitorial staff, those types, the physical labor.
And that would cost more.
Yeah, the disability costs.
So that's one of the unintended consequences you have to sort of worry about, some of these things.
Someone does receive a disability, whether or without eligibility, do they then qualify for SSI?
SSI?
Even though they haven't contributed to Social Security?
I don't believe so, Bill, because even if you were eligible for Social Security, once you're on Massachusetts pension, you have all those offsets. You have the windfall elimination provision, and the other ones, I always forget. So your pension would be offset no matter what.
No, it's not no matter what, because if you have, is it 38 quarters?
Unless you're over a certain amount, you're absolutely right.
34, 29, 34, December 2016.
The other thing it does is, right now, anybody with 20 or more years of service can retire. That eliminates that provision as well at any age, except for the minimum retirement Actually, the Senate bill did not reduce the contribution rate for newly hired Group One members to 8.5 percent. That was something that was changed in the Senate bill. That was from the original governor's proposal. They changed that. I'm not sure what actually happened in the House bill, whether they changed the contribution rate or not. I don't believe they did. Group Two and Four remain the same at 9 percent, and the 2 percent over 30,000 remains the same. And they increased the period for computing your average earnings for your salary for three years to five years ago. Heard about that one as well. Other provisions in the bill, reduces the newly hired teachers' contribution rate to 10.5 percent. It allows same-sex partners married before 5/17/05 and retired before 5/17/04 to change to an opency. The opency, of course, is the pop-up if the, it allows the spouse to collect the benefit, reduce benefit if the other spouse passes away. Expands the process for recovering pension payments for convicted retirees, the so-called Section 15.
What does that mean, expands the process?
I think what it means is, if I understood it correctly, right now, the Retirement Board, and this has come to us a number of times, we can't recover anything until the day that person is convicted. The day they're convicted, you can have a process you go through. You can terminate their pension, you can take it away, you can recover, you know, a certain amount of loss from the person. What this would do was, it moves the date back to the actual date that the event took place.
That's always related to fraud against the government, isn't it?
No, there's provisions in the pension law that if you do, if you commit a criminal act and are convicted, that's a big piece, that you can lose your pension. There's different provisions or different weightings of it.
Because, do you lose Social Security?
That's nothing to do with Social Security. We're talking about Massachusetts pension.
Well, I think that people who are looking and not suggesting that they would, you know, that alles a life of crime versus, you know, working for the government, but it seems to me that that puts, if somebody is convicted and they lose their pension and their crime wasn't related to their service.
Well, that's one of the big questions, if it's a crime related to your office. But different people have different standards. For example, a police officer or a fireman is held to a higher standard, because they take it off. And theoretically, a police officer is on duty 24 hours a day, so the police officer may not see that he is committing a crime against his office, but he may be. So it's not an easy answer, Bill, but you could lose your pension. And that's sort of, and what they're doing is, they're expanding the ability to do that. And this is one of those things that's been in the news a lot. It's going to be in the news even more, I think, with the whole Chelsea situation. You're going to be reading about it for months and months and months to come, so. So this gives the Retirement Board basically more power, more discretion in terms of taking pensions away. And it requires cost analysis for, Bill's providing specific benefits to certain individuals. That's sort of been out there for a while. Parax been.
Well, I mean, you can just go online and read the acts of 2004, whatever, pick a year, and you will find all these special acts that deal with specific individuals where they receive something other than what they normally would.
Yes, although I would say, if you go back a few years, I would say from now, going back a few years, there haven't been any. Since sort of this pension reform kicked in and, you know, the focus became on public pensions, I don't think there's been very many. But certainly, in the past, there have been. So that was it. I just wanted, you know, I did want, they're going to do another study commission, that's continuing out there. Where this is right now, I believe it's in conference, because the House voted out a proposal, the Senate voted out a proposal, so I believe it's in conference. The question was, is whether it comes out before, basically, they have to be done, what, next Wednesday?
Wednesday, Wednesday's the last day.
Yeah.
And then they don't convene again until January.
Till after.
So it'll be interesting to see.
The question will be whether something comes out before or after something.
You know, you're the chairman. Are you also the treasurer for the retirement system?
I'm the treasurer for Barnstable County. We don't, the Retirement Association, per se, doesn't really have a treasurer.
Treasurer, okay, so it's all the different groups come up there?
Yeah, it's not its own member.
Members and put those together and come up with what, okay.
Yeah.
All right. If no other questions, thank you very much.
That's very good.
Good, yeah.
Thank you.
And as they say, if people have specific questions, they can get in touch directly with you or with the Retirement Office, with Deb calling, right?
Yeah, exactly, yeah. Specific retirement questions, I would refer to Debbie.
Okay, and the phone number's up there, 508-775-1110. Okay, well, with that, they'll go to the next, we'll turn a little bit behind, we're going into your evaluation. I believe that you have sent out copies of the evaluation, which you all should have. Do you, do you have a copy of? As part of your, as part of your evaluation, you did attach the goal of the system that we looked at last year as far as an outline of it, and I believe that you had...
I had two sets, but that's just me.
I had two sets as well.
I had a big set, and then I had a little set.
Okay. Well, as we begin...
So I tried to answer both of them, I think that's what I did to you when you were doing this.
There's several categories under which you have roles, and the first one is regional programs, interviewing environment, internal operations, and public education, and, yeah, public education. Are we, do we have any opinions as to what priority we should have Mark set?
No, I think Mark can kind of take it.
Yeah, I kind of like to get from Mark about what kind of objectives he'd like to pursue for the coming year.
I would defer to your, you know, to what you'd like us to do with this as far as the presentation. Are you ready to make the presentation?
Which document are we going to work on now?
Well, I'm going to suggest that we look at goals first.
Okay.
Which would be the, you know, which would be...
Which will then transfer over to...
From the 2011 goals?
Right, we would then, you know, we would then confirm with the first four, although all of these, you know, have a level of importance.
Okay, I was going to do it a little bit different.
Okay, so let's see, you like...
This is how I do it, when I do mine. We go, first, we go over the past year. So these are the four that I had for the past year, and those are the ones I remember, and then, then I think...
Oh, these four, yeah. Yes, so this...
And then, so that's what I mean when I say I have, like, two sets. I had the 2011, and then I had those short ones, and then I have these long ones, which Bill was just talking about, kind of on a long-term basis. So let's start with those. And the first one was, you just took mine away. You should, you don't have it?
I don't see it, unless it's attached to the...
Because then I gave you this and sort of my response, and that's sort of what I do every time I do that.
Yeah, these, these two. Right?
I guess the only thing I have here is the evaluation that I made. I don't have the...
Okay, all right. All right. So the first one was, do the county, the report. So, you know, every week, more or less, I wouldn't say I've done every single week, I try to give you one of these.
And I found that to be very helpful.
Yeah, I mean, my question for you on that would be, do you find that there are things that are missing or that I'm not getting? Like, today, I only had two things, but then I was going to add verbally about the governor announcing his grant, regional grant program, he announced the four million. And I just, when I saw the email announcing it from the, you know, Department of Local Services, I didn't have a chance to put it on, so.
And we can talk about that, you know, after we get finished. That four million is something that I think that, like, the Wastewater Collaborative and the IDO needs to get more directly involved to see if we can access some of that funding.
Right. And so then, the second one was, you know, we were dealing with the whole IT issue. I would say, you know, personally, this is what happens to, when I tend to meet with the department managers. Some of these things say, well, we haven't finished with that, we're going to continue it. And I would say the IT is one that we're still working on.
Yes, it is.
I think, you know, they built a lot of the building blocks that the New Eon Report mentioned. They put together the, you know, the IT committee. We're working on the policies. I mean, I think almost all the IT policies are in place. I know John just sent me the procurement policy. So we're working on elements of those. Would I say that we're done on the IT? No, definitely not. We're dealing with some situations with corporate extension over the past couple of weeks that I had to get involved in. So there's still some issues out there that we're still trying to work around. I think overall, and this is talking to Peter Carlson as well, and Peter helped summarize. I meet with John every other week, John Morris, and we go over everything that's going on, and issues he's having, and issues that other people are having, so. I think we've got that kind of communication piece, at least between me and IT and better. Peter said something I thought that was very helpful. We sort of got the, you know, we had the help desk piece, and it's, okay, have a problem, you can call the help desk and sort of get it taken care of. An IT staff member will help you kind of fix it. And he thought that was in pretty decent shape. We got that in pretty good shape. Then, on the bigger side, you got kind of the network program stuff out there. Billy Travers does most of the networking things, and Peter thought that was in pretty good shape. We rebuilt the backbone structure, the network, we've kind of gotten the backup stuff all straightened out. We haven't had too many failures lately that have left us with communication. It's this sort of middle piece that are kind of middle-term tasks that we haven't solved yet. And so I think that's, you know, for 2012, that's an emphasis that I'm trying to work with John, I'm trying to get.
What would those be, Mark? Those middle, for an example?
Somebody comes to you and they want to rebuild their website, or somebody comes to you and they want a program to do billing for PV Solar Systems. Those are the type of things that, you know, we've kind of rushed to put out the fires on the help desk stuff, rushed to put out the fires on it, and we haven't tackled that sort of middle part. I don't know how else to describe. That's how Peter described it, and I thought it was a good description.
Oh, I have a question in terms of the budget. The money that was put in the budget to support this goal, is that, were they sufficient? The money that was put in the budget to support this goal, is that, were they sufficient? Are they, some of them unused or need to be maybe continued on?
I think from the capital perspective, it's very, it's sufficient. There's no question in my mind that that's sufficient. I think, I don't think we've had to direct or redirect any of it from this project to that project. I think we've been pretty good and pretty clean on all of it. You know, John's claim is that, you know, he needs a staff person. He needs a, and sure, that's what I'll see on the budget request for 2013. He needs an administrative assistant to help him kind of sort it out. And I keep saying, you know, John, I wish we could, but I think right now, given the general fund's picture, it's just tough to do. So you're going to have to make do with what you've got. And so I guess what I would say on that, I'm still weighing it. I just, I don't know, you know? I don't know at this point.
Do you have any other questions? I do have a question, and I think it's something we can't afford to overlook. And that is, IT tends to be a movable piece and a very fluid kind of activity. And I have great respect for, you know, for Peter Carlson, for example. But I wonder, in looking at some of the requests that you're getting, as to whether or not, instead of responding to, let's say, increasing headcount, I wonder if this isn't an area where you should give serious consideration to outsourcing some of these what are called short-term projects in order to get them done in a timely manner?
Yeah, I mean, that's certainly one of the things that we're looking at, exactly.
And I think that speaks to the question you had about whether or not we have sufficient capital in order to do it. I must say that...
But John does have a significant increase, you know, for this year in his professional services budget. So, but that, yeah, that's one of the things we're looking at. I mean, he certainly has an alternative. And it's an alternative that we've employed. You know, we haven't shied away from doing that.
And how do you feel that he's doing? I mean, and that, you think some of it's John? Or you think some of it's...
I think, well, it's my evaluation, not John's. So, yeah, I mean, I don't think we've solved all the issues of IT. I guess I'll leave that down.
Okay, so...
And I don't try to, I'm not trying to make it, John. It's just this is how we're dealing with the IT and it's...
But I think going forward too, are we going to be ready when OpenCape launches in 2013?
Yeah.
In January? Are we going to have the software and the hardware and everything that we need to be able to, to make the best...
Take advantage of what? Yeah, I think so. That's the track that we are on. And I know that's one of the areas that we are working closely with.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, yeah, the folks over at OpenCape, so.
Okay.
That's sort of not the major problem that I see IT having. I think some of the major problems are, like I said, getting to these middle things that they sort of get lost and shuffle, I think, a little bit. That's where I see most of the issues emanating from.
Okay, let's get on to the next one.
No, that's fine.
And, you know, so these are the presentations that I've been doing. You can read them for yourself. And I think we've tried to do, you know, I've tried to cover the municipal relief package for the town administrators. This year, we also finished the Gatsby OPEB piece. That was one that actually, sort of funny story. When I went to CHAM last week, I, they have their board package up online. So I opened up the board package and the agenda is first. And I look down and I see that I was scheduled to give them a presentation on Gatsby OPEB, which is the other postpartum benefits. And I said, that's not the presentation I'm giving them. So there's a little confusion about Gatsby OPEB versus pension reform and those types of things, so. But we did talk about Gatsby OPEB, spent a lot of time on it.
And looking at the Q and A, have you, have you been to all 15 towns over the last year?
Uh, no.
Okay, have you, how many towns have you ever been to?
But I've done that through the town administrators. That's mostly, to me, that's the most efficient and effective way to communicate. And so the answer is, have I been to every town administrator's monthly lunch? No, but I've been to most of them.
Okay. And in your communication with the town administrators, there has been some interest, some suggestions by some that the town managers and town administrators are the best source of information with regard to recommendations on successful opportunities for regional program applications. They have in the past been, you know, been a great source for that. What's, what's a takeaway that you have for us when you get to that area and you're contacting them?
Oh, I think the two biggest ones that have seemed to been dealt with, I shouldn't say dealt with, because they're still open issues. There's the one that emanated from the local grants program from the commission, the one that was done in Yarmouth.
The recent?
The regional fee software that Ed Santio and Yarmouth are working on.
E-permitting software.
The e-permitting, thank you very much. I couldn't think of anything.
That is...
So that's been a major focus that kind of, not just at the town administrator's level, but that they've been working on. So that's, and we're working with Ed Santio and Elaine is going to do the procurement piece for that, if I understand correctly, because that's what we should be doing is... And so it gives you various levels of participating. I believe that's one of the grant, that's one of the applications they'll be making for this regionalization grant that was just announced. They'll be trying to get some money for that. So that was, that was a big effort. Of course, that...
It's important to be, you know, if that's a grant that's coming here, it's very important for, you know, for us to be on top of that and being, if there's a coordination piece, we don't want to let that...
Yeah. Maybe we should give, maybe we should have Ed come over and give a presentation.
I would like to have Ed.
That's what I'm thinking. We should do that. The second biggest one, obviously, has been one headed up by Sean, and it's the whole regional communication thing. And that's out there as well. And that's gotten a lot of attention. Has a lot of attention. Where it's going to go, I don't know, but that's a big one. A smaller one is the...
Is he asking for any extra, any other support other than what you've been giving or not? Because that Regional Emergency Planning Committee is something that, you know, is something that's very important, I think, to, and it certainly, you know, covers our mission with regard to trying to enhance the quality of life.
Yeah, no, it's all a question now, Bill, of kind of, they have the report, they have the financial stuff. Now it's trying to come to some agreement conclusion on, A, what it all means, and B, where it's all going.
This, if I may, there was a related question I had when we got to your contact with the town managers. One of the things that the three of us have been concerned with over time is, how do we set up what I would call a continuing, continuing contact point so that issues of regional, you know, let's say, for regional services can be, once they've been identified, can be, let's say, evaluated and supported? And I was wondering what kind of, what kind of, let's say, response that the town managers and administrators have had to that kind of a concept? Because knowing that, we could certainly use that as, if it's a, as an argument, we go to the assembly to support, you know, requests and that kind of thing.
I'm trying to figure out, sort of get active proponents and passive proponents. And I'm trying to decide how to say who's who and who's not who.
We don't have to mention names.
I know. It's sort of hard not to. But that's, so it depends, I guess, on what the service is and what they're looking for.
See, I think, I think in terms of this year, where we're looking at this past year, and then in looking toward this coming year and the future, I was pretty stounded at the, our, what do you call it, the special commission meeting, not the last one, the one, the one, no, it's the last one. When Bud Dunham spoke, you know, Bud Dunham and Bob Lawton are there?
Yeah.
And Bud Dunham made an excellent presentation on the benefits of county government to the town's sandwich, and all of the services that the town, that the town has had, and how that has enabled him to use his town revenue for other things. In other words, instead of him having to provide all these services through their budget, they were able to do them with the assistance of the county. And it was an excellent summary of how county government really helps communities. So as a result of that, I thought, really? The town managers is where this is, where this is at. And if we're going to make any headway on regionalization, we're going to have to do it with the town managers. So I don't want to get into how to do it now, but I think that should be one of our goals. How can we utilize, how managers to really move this forward? Because they're the doers.
Yeah.
And it's their budgets that...
And they, and they propose the budgets, obviously. They create them. The selectmen really approve them while it depends on the charter. But, but basically, they manage the budgets. And they know where their needs are and how we can help in them. So I think somehow we should address that as we get into developing our goals for next year and utilizing these town managers.
And indeed, that's what prompted my question.
And that was the whole idea.
And I, you know, and it's, it's not as, as complex as the communication, regional communication, or even if we go into e-permitting, which I think is going to be huge savings across the board on many different permitting aspects. But, you know, we have things like the building inspector that has been contracted with the town. I mean, Paul Seelof's one guy that's ready to give anything away. He, he's happy to give things away.
He's inactive. He's definitely inactive.
Yes, yes. He understands that it's, he's not losing by giving something up. And so if you, so how is that? I know that she picked up someplace, there was another person that...
No, it's...
Her workload has increased a bit. I know she's working with the commission.
She's working with the commission and working with, well, those are the only two right now.
Now, how do we, have we disseminated? Have we made sure that all town managers know that that service is available?
Yeah, they're all, they're all, I just talked about it at the last town managers meeting. The issue we have with that is, right now, she's working 19 hours a week. And if we expand it, then we're going to have, we're going to be faced with the whole benefits issue. We have to be faced with how to pay for that.
Right. So we'd need at least a few more towns to make that worth our while and then have it go forward. So if, you know, maybe that should be...
But it's a start. I think it's a good foot in the door. And it's been very successful.
Right.
Paul thinks it's working very well, and I think it's working very well.
It sounds like it's a piece of expanding, you know, let's say, the regional services piece for the managers is to expand the use of an existing service.
Right.
So that might be incorporated as sort of a sub-goal under that.
Well, the other one I was going to throw out, not to get ahead, because I was going to mention that one. That was a very good one. It's sort of off the burner now, and I just do the billing for Wealthly once a month. And that's worked out very well as well. And then the other one was, a small one, is the Gatsby OPEB that we do every two years. And it's a really tiny thing, but, you know, they, so they pay 1,760 bucks, I think, for the service. We did it with 30 units. The actuary for the Retirement Association, Siegel, Kathy Riley, she does the calculation. Everybody gets a report. So we just sent out the 30 reports. And there's some, the really thing that some of them are looking at now, came up at CHAM, is to try to do the trust piece on a regional basis. So that's one of the things we're going to look at. Apparently, they did this on, like that in Martha's Vineyard. So we're going to pull together those pieces. They need special legislation, so we filed a special legislation and drew this on a regional basis. That's another one. So it's kind of doing the Gatsby OPEB trust is doing that on a regional basis. It's relatively small, but it's one of these things that towns really don't want to bother with. You know what I mean? It's, it's a pain to them. And then the other one that we sort of, we haven't done anything with it is yet, is the assessing piece. I think that's a big one to tackle.
We've been talking about that for 12 years now.
Well, I know, but I think that's one that's doable. Because I'd say the other one that's out there that we're the biggest bang for your buck is, but it's really, you know, that's a very steep hill, is the whole public safety piece. I think, you know, not just the communication, but other aspects of it. And I was hoping that maybe this 911 study would push in that direction a little bit. Maybe it will, maybe it won't. I don't know. But that's another one out there that I think we need to...
Now, that study is complete.
It's done now.
So we should have a discussion about that.
Did we receive copies of the...
Yeah, you should have, electronic. I just had it out electronically, yes.
We might have to have that sent to you again.
We should have Sean come in and talk about, where are we with it? What's going on?
Make some notes on that. You could do that, I think, it's a good idea.
And the interpretation of the recommendations.
Yeah.
The next thing is the litigation management team is one of the...
That was, came up for the CLF, we met, and blew twice on, on that particular issue.
Okay. Do you think that that's basically at a point where it's been resolved as far as going forward? Because I think that, in my opinion, it looks like there has a, has a singular momentum that is independent of what, anything we can do at this point. But do you think it's something that...
It's resolved, in my mind, through June 30th of 2012. Then the next resolution question will be, what are you factoring for the budget next year?
Well, if that happens to be coincident with your next evaluation time...
I haven't, well, I haven't talked to Andy about kind of what does he perceive over the next year. I haven't, we haven't talked about it.
I think this is a losing from the shoe.
But I think, that's sort of the next, well, I think it's resolved for now. I think with the budget, what is what it is. We just extended the Anderson and Krieger contract. They're sort of doing what they're doing. I think the next question is, is what are you, to what extent do we do this going forward? That would be the next question.
And so far, we're concerned.
That's sort of your question.
Well, they're in weekly mediation at this point.
Yeah, exactly.
So right now, and that's mediation, so they're sort of mute on what's going on. I mean, they, they're in the middle.
Yeah, Andy told us what they were going to do, so we know what they're doing.
And told us what they're doing, and now they're in that process. And when that process ends, then we'll be able to speak to something.
Yeah.
And then we'll have them in and see where we're at.
Yeah.
Well, I think that our position, at least what I've heard our position is, it's a good one, which is, we are representing the constituents. We are representing the whole, you know, the whole population.
The homeowners.
We're the only layer of government that has a voice for all, we don't represent it in individual town. We, we really do represent the constituents here. And they, you know, and if there's an argument that they want to, if they get pushed around EPA where they're going to go after the point source, you're talking about people of septic systems and, you know, does everybody want the federal government in, you know, permitting the septic?
But the point is that as long as, as long as we're, you know, united in, in our opinion, that we're supporting the needs of the people, and I think that we're, that to me is a justification for supporting what we're doing with regard to the CLF stuff.
And that's...
And that's why I mean, well, it's sort of resolved at this point.
At this point, I think it's, yeah, it's as far as it's going to go.
Okay, that's your goals from last year. And now I think, unless you had something to add to that? Do you have another question?
Comment or issue?
So now, I think we have to look at what we're, you know, what we would consider going forward as being, as being goals.
The only other thing I would say...
Because this is something we negotiate.
Yeah.
It's sort of in the public education piece, you know, these types of presentations. I think sort of the town administrators especially can look to me and sort of keep them up to date on some of these, you know, municipal relief. That, that's not as big a one that's out there now.[1616.75] But pension reform, they sort of look to me and say, well, what's going on in pension reform? And I think what that's helpful is they don't have to worry about trying to keep track of what's going on. Because that could be, that could be a hard thing to do. This pension reform's got four different versions floating around out there, so.
How much time do you think you spend on the pension reform, you know, like absorbing that, understanding it, getting it out to people?
A day a week. Let's say that. Yeah, a day a week.
There's a lot to it.
Right now, yeah. And then, you know, they'll pass something in, you know, say in January. Then it's sort of digesting what it is they passed. So you'll spend, you know, spend a couple of days going through that. And then there won't be anything for a while. Then it's just implementing.
And do you send it like a, like, say you get all that information and you, you know, digest it, you've got an understanding, do you just answer people's questions when they call on that? Or do you send, say, like a letter saying, this is what we, this is what's happened? This is my, this is how it gets being interpreted? This is what it means to you as a town administrator, and any further questions you can call?
Yeah, and usually I try to do that through the town administrators' meeting. And then, so not everybody's now, fifteen are there. That's very rare. So then, you know, Bob Lawton's still coordinating that. So then after I get back, I'll send Bob the presentation and say, Bob, can you please send this to whoever? And he sends it to everybody, so that everybody has it, so they, they're able to see it.
And then they can call you with whatever questions, okay?
Okay, the other thing you have down here is ensure compliance with ethics training requirements.
Where are your...
That's an easy one. Check.
On public education.
I'm sorry, say that again.
One of the goals under public education is ensure compliance with ethics training requirements in the public education goals. That seems to be something that is ongoing, and I would hope to be able to met that goal. And this is a matter of maintenance.
Yeah, we're in, I'm maintenance mode. I would say that's a good way to characterize it. Excuse me, a hundred percent compliance last year, and actually, what's his name? Oh, I keep forgetting his name. David? What's his name? Giannotti?
Yes.
He called me, calls me like at the end of the year and says, George Bryant owes me this. And I think George owes us a couple of things, and, you know...
I owed something.
Somebody owed something. Yeah, exactly. And so then you just say, you need to do that. And then that's what you do. Yeah. So it works pretty well. It's a pretty good system. We try to stay out of trouble. It's like the last page, I think.
Actually, I have two, I have two copies of that page.
I have, I have the copies.
Goals for two thousand and twelve, and I have goals for two thousand and eleven.
And he's looking at the two thousand and twelve one, I think.
Okay. Well, I thought we were gonna review the goals of the two thousand and eleven.
I think they're probably pretty much the same.
Some, yep.
The two thousand and eleven ones were what I put together last year, and then you guys sort of boiled them down, if I remember, what happened to these four. Because the thing lists four.
Yeah, I know, and I don't like that form.
I know. And so that's why I use this thing, which was kind of animated from the...
I think we should not use this at all, because it's confusing.
And it doesn't allow discussion. It doesn't, it's, it's a black or white and...
I only have, you go for two thousand and twelve and two thousand and eleven?
Yeah, there's an eleven one that's, looks like that, and then there's a twelve that looks like that.
Yeah, I have the eleven.
I think I only have, I only have the twelve one.
It says FY two thousand and eleven appear performance goals, and the other one says FY two thousand and twelve.
All I have is the two thousand and twelve, so.
Okay.
Yeah, me too. I didn't bring the eleven's.
Okay, good.
I have, you want me to run a quick copy for you just too? It's only four pages. I'll be happy to do it.
Would you do that?
Yep.
Oh, and these are the ones, that's what I'm looking at, the ones for twelve.
Yeah, it says twelve on the top.
That's twelve.
Well, that one is over here, Bill. It's, it's somewhat similar. This one has the recovery zone bond thing on it, which is done.
Okay, this says the Finance one oh one two, the Shadow Review Committee.
Yeah.
We don't have that this year. We don't have a Shadow Review. And I believe you owe the Special Commission on the report.
I'm meeting with them tomorrow, giving my finance presentation.
Is it tomorrow?
With tomorrow, with the Lieutenant Governor.
Is that tomorrow?
Mm-hmm.
It's not today, next week.
Nope, it's tomorrow. It's at three thirty?
Three thirty, it's early.
Three thirty tomorrow at the assembly.
It's actually here.
No, it's in here.
Oh, it's in here?
It's in here, yeah.
I had that wrong.
Oh, okay. Oh, good. I'm glad you said that. Okay, in the wrong place. And then there's the Lieutenant Governor coming here, then, to this room.
He's gonna be here.
So now he has a fundraiser down in Yarmouth. Keep my stuff separate from yours.
Yeah, it's a good thing, too.
Yes.
Okay, I thought it was next week.
There is one next week, too. There's one on the sixteenth.
The one on the sixteenth is the, that's a Thursday, right?
That's a Wednesday.
Wednesday? That's right. He was, he couldn't come on a Wednesday. He had to come on a Thursday, so that's, so it's the...
Right, there's, because, because of the Lieutenant Governor, it's tomorrow.
Right, so it's the tenth. Tomorrow's the tenth, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And then there's another one next Wednesday, after the assembly meeting?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay. I lost my calendar.
Is he driving down here?
Who?
Is he driving himself down here?
Be careful.
It's a good thing he was in his Snipely's car. It has extra armor.
Yeah, did you see that? Car was a mess, yeah. Yeah, they were saying that, actually, didn't somebody yesterday say, Randy or Mark said that the trooper who was responding spun out, too?
Yeah, when he got out of his car, he was on, on Black Ice.
Any of, any of us who've ever traveled up there during that time of year knows how bad those roads are. And you have no, you have no recovery time whatsoever, because you're on it before you know you're on it. And at that time of year, because it, you know, ground gets colder.
So I think the eleven to go to twelve, you'll see that they're similar. There are some differences because things have changed a little bit. But based on what we just said, I will add to them sort of the talk about the IT thing and the talk about the new regional program development.
This is the public education piece.
Wherever it fits. I think it fits in regional programs, which is the first kind of block of things that we do.
Well, do you want to start with regional programs for last?
Okay, can I?
What do you mean region? Why don't we start with page one?
Yeah, that's regional.
Yeah, that's the regional program.
Oh, okay, okay. I, I think, you know, I mean, I think, you know, your measures about, you know, you completed an application, or you attended so many meetings and presented to the advisory board, et cetera. But do, what do we have as, all right, so you know, you get all that information out. Is there any feat, is there any measure of how effective we're being with that communication and with getting those things done?
Well, there's a measure that's listed in the...
I understand it's complete, but what's the outcome?
It's a hard thing to do. It's not for the measure, yeah. How do you...
How can we do better measures to see that, that we're just not doing the same thing over and over again, and it's not really making the impact we want it to make?
Yeah, I think what, I think what might be helpful is, would be the goal is what we want to accomplish by working with the town managers slash administrators. And then, and then what those tasks would be. Like, for instance, extending the current regional services that we have, number one. That would be one, and the other would be to define what additional regional services we could offer. And then you measure that by how many towns have decided to participate in those services.
Okay, so let's, but let's get...
Something like that.
But let's, so let's, so we extend the current, so we're talking about the building inspector?
Yeah, about the building inspector, and maybe...
So we may need to put some money in the budget for that. So just because we have the whole issue about the benefits.
So we're looking at extending the existing services.
It's to, no, the goal is to identify.
Well, we've already spoken about extend, about increasing the amount of...
Yeah, he's talking about the building inspector. So, yeah, we try to build that bigger. Okay, so that's right. And then let's build a new. But we should specify what it is we're, because that's what, that's when these things kind of get lost, is when you don't specify.
Right.
If you say, oh, new regional services, you know, we're gonna talk about a hundred of them, but then they'll never get off the ground. So you have to focus on one specific one is the really what you want to do.
I think we talked about assessing for, you know, for an awful long time. I think that's, at this point, I think we have to either put something in place or move on.
Well, if I remember right, that's when, that we were using some of the grant money to do the assessing study. Now, how far that got, I don't know. So that's kind of the first question. Did we do any of that? So we'll find that out. Then the second thing is, is sort of irregardless of the, regardless of the, answer that question, then I start talking to the town administrators, all right, we are looking at the whole assessing function. Let's see if we can put some pieces together. Who's interesting in participating at some level? And you'll say, yes, Charlie, yes, yes. And then you can piece together what it is you're trying to accomplish. Some of them may want to say, okay, why don't you just do, you know, a procurement for, because they're all using the same, two different software systems out there. So you just take, maybe that's all you want to tackle. Or you want to tackle the whole thing soup to nuts, period.
Good, but I think that, I'm convinced, I think we're all convinced that since the managers have the direct responsibility with delivering those services and managing their budget in their communities, they are the best source of what works or what doesn't work with regard to things that they're looking for. The political piece, it's, it's a difference between, you know, the people that are put in place to set policy and the people put in place to deliver services. And I think the most successful strategy is to identify from the people responsible for delivering the services, which ones make sense to them, and then use that as a criteria for developing a list of priorities in order to deliver that. Yeah, just, that would be my opinion on it.
Yeah, with the e-permitting and that initiative going forward, couldn't that tie into streamlining, streamlining like standardized softwares that would be used? Like you're saying, there's two different systems. So what would be, you know, this is where the regional grant money's coming in. If we did a streamlined assessing system, all towns have the same one. You know, there's been feedback from the towns that they have, because they're so different and they all file their own assessing, they get their monies back differently because is it DOR has to go through there, each one individually. Whereas if it was a one system and people could put that in there, they would probably all get their monies back at the same time. These are things that we should be looking at and expanding now, especially if we're increasing the IT with the e-permitting coming on, you know, with the way of the few, you know, the way I look at the future is that we could do a lot of information gathering and, and...
I support that, but I also would suggest that since e-permitting is sort of in, you know, over the Cape Cod Commission, that we, that the main thrust and the greatest opportunity for success in it lies with them. Now, one of the things that, you know, that guy gave when he was giving a presentation at Holy Cross was, is that?
Yes, it's Centio.
Yes, it's Centio. Was that, he emphasized the importance of intercommunication among the, you know, among the communities in order to implement the rest of it. But the first thrust, based upon what I heard, and I went to the presentation on Howard, which as well, is that you have to have all of the planning boards on board, and you have to have the Cape Cod Commission sort of acting, to me, sort of a nexus and a coordinator role of that. Now, at the same time, I think that we would be well-served if we had our IT department working with the Cape Cod Commission's, you know, IT activity to, you know, to make sure there's no gaps in that. Because if there's no compatibility, then, you know, then I think that we would be essentially going off in one direction, and we'd then have to sort of marginalize what we're doing, and then have to change and take a bigger investment in order to make it happen.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that there is gonna be an investment initially, but the savings that we come from it...
Okay, but we have to get the investment first before we can see the savings.
I have to be done by one o'clock. I thought we would be wrapped up by one o'clock.
And I think we can wrap up, and I think we're, yes.
We have to be very...
Specific.
Yes.
At this point, I'd be guided by your experience and key resources.
Right now, I have to say, on this e-permitting, I sort of see that as a, I don't see that gravitating to this because I, it's sort of in a, procurement's not the right word, but that's the word I'll use, procurement mode. They gotta come up with some grant money. Elaine's gotta advertise for the service, and people have to sort of sign up for what they're gonna, what level they're gonna participate at, the sort of different levels.
So you provide normal...
So they're sort of, yeah, it's, it's not focused on my plate.
When we go back...
If it needs to be, then, okay.
Yeah, that's just, that's one piece of it. We want to look at it in the broad, general picture
You're absolutely right.
of, of how to work with town managers to affect the...
Implementation and delivery.
The implementation or the development of the county's regional services on a town, on a town-by-town basis. And then, so what are some of the tasks? Obviously, you have to communicate with the managers, you attend their meetings, you set up agendas or something, and then you measure. The measurement is how many, what are the outcomes? How many towns are really interested in this?
Maybe we need to develop, like with them, Regional Services Subcommittee.
Yeah, I, I think that would be a really good idea, yeah. And maybe that's, that's a task.
Yeah, that would be, I think that's a measurable task, yeah. Okay, so why don't we move on to the next one?
I, I just wonder if the, if the retirement association is really part of the, I know it's, it's a municipal county system, but if it's not, it's not really...
Well, it's part of mine.
I know, it's part of your job, that's...
I wouldn't say significant time, but this is why I think it does, Pat. And it's because it goes back to, it's sort of the...
How it all started.
I hate to say this on camera, but I think that, you know, the, the idea is for the treasurers, the advisory board, all the treasurer's assistants, to be the link to the member units. Maybe, I'm not sure that always works as well as it probably should. And so, but it certainly doesn't work as well, I don't think, as me with the town administrator. So I think that's, that's a good function.
I think that that might be a responsibility of the administrator for the retirement system to provide the communications link if that...
No, it's not.
Yeah, don't get, yeah.
It's not. No.
Okay, well, I would defer to both of you in that quarter.
I think it has to be at the board level, and I think it's appropriate that way. So I, I think that's an important piece. I really do. Because this assessment becomes, when they know less about what you're doing, the assessment gets more... Yeah, they get, it's more attention, it gets more attention.
How much does that interfere with...
It doesn't interfere with anything.
Well, there is a management piece that you're responsible for in terms of total administration, and then there's...
Of what? Of the county, you mean county? Yeah.
Okay, and then there's a responsibility that comes because you have a dual function of both being money, say, the financial manager for the financial accountability and this, this responsibility to the retirement association. And although it's, it's one day a month?
Yeah, two every other, two every, two days a month, every quarter, one day a month the rest of the time. Pretty much.
That, in, in looking at that, you know, there's, there's an element of how do you, how do you segment your time in order to meet all of these responsibilities? And perhaps there should be a piece in here with how you're delegating, let's say, the overall responsibility to, let's say, to maintain what I'd call an understandable, for me and perhaps, you know, for the rest of us, a span of control in, you know, in the, in the operation of delivering services. Because this question comes up, you know, on a regular basis.
I think we should just concentrate on the, on the goal and not get too, otherwise, we, we won't get done.
And we won't get...
We have to agree that this is a goal, and maybe, and, and if we agree to that, then what is it that you're trying to accomplish for this goal? And then let's just go in that, and then...
Well, I, I also just think that there's a lot of discussion that we have to have among ourselves and to figure out where we're going and what's before us. And, you know, we have, we have a study that we had done that we never really delved into. So I think that that's our...
But I'm honored to get through this.
Yeah, so let's go.
So we agree that, that that is a continuing goal?
The other one I would say, it's not just the town administrators, because this comes up periodically from town incomes when they have questions about, you know, the assessment. And then they read stuff in the paper about, you know, pension systems, underfunded, not funded, blah, blah, blah. You know, in Rhode Island, it's, you know, our neighbor. So that's, that sort of is part of what precipitates my need to go out there as well. So, and you try to, you're trying to do it so, so you nip that stuff in the bud, so they have a better understanding about, you know, this system, how it's funded, who's paying the bills.
Okay, so communication is a very important part of relationships, and we can't, we can't discount it. Okay, so we agree that, that we have a measurement piece on, on the committee that we want to set up, that you continue to communicate information to member units with regard to, you know, their, let's say, exposure in the, and answering their questions. And you continue to work with the town managers to identify new regional initiatives. And I guess if you would have some opportunity to notify us as to what your success is with the town manager, then I think it would be up to us to communicate with the boards of selectmen through perhaps the association meetings that we go to as far as what, you know, what the town managers are telling us.
Well, see, I think that's a discussion for another time. I think we need to lay this out and then talk about how we get there at, at a different time.
Yeah, I think that's probably a good approach.
We need to just deal with this, what's here now, and not extend it out beyond.
That's kind of the next step, exactly.
Yeah, and then come back again and say, okay, we've read it, now we've agreed it, and then we've agreed on it. And then at another meeting, we talk about how this is gonna work.
What we see as these goals, right.
You know, how is, that kind of thing.
So why don't we continue to go through this one? The other, you have energy environment. You did a great job, by the way. Somebody's exhausted issue, wow.
I know, wow, it was a late night, I must tell you.
Energy and Environment is the next page on this, the last one. And it was provide, Paul, do you have any comment as far as this, any of this stuff?
Uh, one and two, no. Three, we might have to, I mean, you know, who knows? I don't know what three is gonna look like going forward.
Yeah, I think that we, in light of things, this is a discussion we have to have.
I agree, yeah. I think the county and me are gonna play some role for some portion of two thousand and twelve, which we're talking about here. So exactly what that is, let me take a quick, why don't you guys let me take a stab at that, modifying that?
I think that's a good idea.
Because some of this has changed even since I put this together, which was, you know, kind of going on five months ago now, so.
Okay, all right, then getting to the next one.
And four is very good. That's, yeah.
So are you guys looking at twelve or four or eleven?
We're on twelve. I'm on twelve.
My one twelve, I was on energy environment, which mostly deals with the whole CEDAC stuff. So I'm gonna turn that page, right?
Yeah.
And now my next one is on twelve, but it says, continue implementation of recommendation of IT consultant review, which is a continuing one. We just start talking about that. There's a role over aspect of that.
And we've already, we've already gotten rid of the sheriff, won't we?
Well, that was...
I think on the measures, though, it's gotta be more than just the meetings.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, I agree.
I mean, what do you really want to accomplish? In the goal, I know you want to accomplish recommendations...
On the IT one, yeah, no, I disagree. I agree, yeah.
And then, you're going to work with the user committee, or convene user committees.
I think we're going to get to some point where we...
And what do you really want to get to, like a web design or a...
I think we're going to get to some point where we can do like a client satisfaction survey.
Mm-hmm. I think that's a really good idea.
And have a kind of passing grade, I guess, or, you know, maybe we won't shoot for exemplary yet, but we sort of, yeah, things are better, and, you know, we've seen progress, that kind of thing.
Perception is very important.
Yeah, well, it's more than a perception, it's a sort of reality, I think.
There is a reality, but unless you have a positive perception in front of the users, you're not going to really get to a successful reality.
So maybe what we want to do is develop a, you know, satisfaction...
Yeah, what...
Satisfaction survey kind of thing?
That's standard, CRM stuff.
And then, you know, receive, you know, passing...
There are standard measures in customer relationship management surveys for this sort of thing.
Yeah, we don't have to get into details, you can talk, okay.
I'll tell you what, you can develop a satisfaction survey.
Yes, I did.
We discuss this between us.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, what's the next thing, Pat?
Okay, so you got her the sheriff's, so you're going to develop the county operating budget.
You guys are looking at the wrong thing.
I'm looking at 11 and 12.
You're talking about sheriff, I don't mind, mine ain't got no sheriff.
I know, well, that's...
11 was the sheriff's.
Yeah, he's gone.
We're on internal operations.
Yeah, internal operations, the next one's develop the operating of the county budget, and that takes a lot of time.
I have 12 and I have 11.
So I know you guys think it's rote work, but it's not.
No, we're actually talking...
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Can I take 10 seconds for a take train?
Yeah, go ahead.
I think one of the things on internal operations is we really need to look at and fund executive and administrative functions, just somewhere around, and just do it and get it done.
That's sort of down here on the special commission and MMA thing.
Yeah, I think this...
It's like number five, four.
Number four, and that's, that is something that we have to, that's our discussion right there is...
MMA. Oh, yes, right, and I put that on here, too, is that we need to execute...
Yeah, we have to figure out what we're going to do, yeah.
Maybe not all of them, I mean, we have to really look at it, but we need to do that. And the other thing, I mean, the tasks involved in that, should, I think, when you have departments that have similar functions, sort of related functions, that you build teams around that. Like, for instance, in building the, I'm thinking of performance-based budgeting, and I know that requires a whole educational piece, and we're not there yet, but we should, I think we should have a goal of performance-based budgeting for the county. And that, you know, you build your financial teams and have, you know, similar...you know, when the report talks about the very, you know, having four departments or something like that, you could build financial teams in there, and they can work on their budget almost together with certain goals. It's a major goal, and you can't do it all in one year. But it works so well, and it brings people together.
Okay, but now you're getting into the details, that's a good idea.
I know, well, yeah, okay.
I think that's a good idea, why don't we do that?
Well, but you have to work with the commissioners to review and implement the recommendations.
We're going to have to discuss this.
And the reports, yes.
Yeah.
And then how that's going to happen, and then get it done.
Yeah.
Okay, that's good. Oh, yeah, the county crap.
Yes.
Yeah, we still have to do that. Maggie and I have to talk to her.
Have you identified, I think we talked about somebody, but we need to...
The last step is the appointment.
Okay, I'd like to do that before the end of the year.
I think so.
You'll have to change your date.
Who are we, who are we looking at? Is there, is there, how would we do that? Is that like an RFP or is that just...
No, we don't have anything, we are just a...
It's an existing person.
We have existing person in mind.
Yeah, I would, I'd rather not say...
Okay.
Camera, but...
But you mean want to change the date?
Yeah, well, definitely want to change the date, but yeah, it's, yeah, it's...
Okay, let's get that done.
And then the open meeting law issues?
Should I raise the question about, nobody seemed to miss the kind of...
About what? The open meeting law issues? No.
Open meeting law. Oh, the one, oh, yeah, yeah. So filings, open meeting law issues to satisfaction county commissioners? I don't know, if you guys are not satisfied or...
Well, I, you know, I...
Well...
We've sort of gone through the agenda thing, we've gone through the declaration thing.
I must say that you haven't gone through the agenda item.
No, I mean the agenda, agenda thing, not agenda, I...
Even our agenda?
No, no, I'm talking about the agenda, agenda thing, all right? For 14 years of being part of the county, you know that I've always had problems with the detail on the agenda.
You're talking about the minutes, I think.
No, I'm talking about the agenda.
The agenda.
The agenda, okay. This is, this, perhaps it's just me, I know that you've gotten, you've gotten, there's a support from, you know, from our attorneys about the minimums, and I've accepted that because that's what he said.
I don't know what you're talking about, Bill, I have to say. I don't know what you're talking about. I relieve the agenda responsibility to you. If you're not getting what you want, you're not telling Kara what you want on the agenda, I have to say.
I think we were talking about the open meeting law in general, so I think what we want to do is develop policies and procedures regarding the open meeting law implementation for county employees. So when you get a new employee, they come in, there's a process, they have to take the test, they do this, they get filed, you know, it's not, and I think, and then periodically, when you meet with department heads, go over the open meeting law, go over the process, and, because it's complex, I can tell you, believe me. From my just past experience in hiring a town manager, it was the most difficult thing that to overcome, were the changes to the open meeting law. I'm telling you.
Yeah, except...
The MMA asked me if I would speak at a workshop at the MMA meeting in January on the pitfalls to the open meeting law. I said, absolutely.
But it wouldn't be bad to also have like a standard protocol of meetings, of this is, this is the agenda, this is how, this is how the agenda looks. If there's materials that are being presented there, somebody has to make sure that those things are available at the door for people.
I hate we're getting to the nuts and bolts.
I know, but those are things that we need to put in writing and make them sort of like an internal policy.
Okay, so develop like a standard protocol.
And I think that stuff that we have to work on together...
And there's one other thing that I think in terms of internal operations, employee training.
I was just saying, say, educate staff on...
Yeah, well, just employee training in general. I don't know what you do, fairness with training, and I know people attend workshops and all of that, but I'm thinking just internally among the group, doing training around lots of things. I don't want to get into the details.
Well, the details are sort of important. I mean, I know what we will be doing, training coming forward, that would be health insurance.
Yeah, I would include employee training. I think it's really important as a goal to make sure that we really are focusing in on training employees.
And the other part is the cross-training, so that people, because when people, well, there needs to be some way of, they would say, backing up employees.
Although, that's a little bit different than what you're talking about. You're talking about like employee training on...
On budgeting.
Yeah, all of that stuff.
I mean, I think that's a big thing, on budgeting in terms of services.
You won't have a financial team within a department unless they have some understanding of how budgeting works.
Well, yeah, what is the service they provide? What does it cost? What does it cost the personnel? What does it cost in office supplies or whatever? You know, it's kind of like a, kind of getting people focused on what they're doing and what the cost is to provide those services, you know, and so that they can build their budgets around it. Okay, next one, public education. See, the first thing is we have to define the goals, and here we are. Updates on county finance country reform, provide a presentation, provide information.
All right, so...
Oh, you know, yeah...
There was a specific thing on 11, Finance 101, that's done. And there's a specific thing here on the county finances, pension reform, and other legislative updates, which we've already talked about.
Well, I think, I want to focus in on the finance, because the Assembly of Delegates is having the vapors over our expenses, and I think that we...
Where did that come from? Wait, I have to ask you this, because...
Well, because you said, you know, that you had met with them?
Yeah.
Well...
The FinCon, I met with, I gave them a presentation on the...
But then, the Assembly again keeps bringing up the fact that on a month-by-month basis, they look at where we are, and they think that we're not planning ahead, we're not, we're not aware of, and then they ask me, well, when is a decision point, when you decide that you're still under and you have to make decisions?
Oh, they want complete predictability and...
And I'm explaining to them, this is taught, this is managing a budget. You manage the budget on a week-to-week, month-to-month basis, and there are certain factors that you know to look for, and then you adjust as you go along. And I said to them, this is really, you don't have to worry about this.
Well, I think it's also, I wish, because I think that when I met with the FinCon, gave the treasurer's report presentation, that was very helpful.
Yeah.
But Bill had had a question about it, he wasn't able to attend that day, and that sort of walked them through how all of those things take place over the course of the year, and so, I wish, maybe I need, maybe there's a specific...
You need to do it for the Assembly.
Yeah, exactly.
I think so, and also explain how, you know, what are your decision points? What do you look at? And what is the, well, I think there was something about, we're only 1% or 2% under or something like that.
2.3%.
So then, what percentage do you have to reach where you do something about it?
So maybe we need to go back, Bill, to the 11 one, that says, you know, do a Finance 101.
Well, it troubles me is that we send answers to questions that are posed by the Assembly in a regular basis, and I get comments from them, oh, I don't want to read that before you come in because that will just sort of cloud my mind.
That's stupid.
I get a lot of that.
Again, they don't read it actively.
And they do not read it.
Yeah, that's part of it.
They do not read, because all the questions that I know that they've asked have been answered. The point is that if we answer the questions and they refuse to read the answers, how can we respond?
Well, what we can do, and what works, it worked for the FinCon.
She didn't read it.
I thought that was very good. We do a workshop, I'll have Janice schedule a workshop session, we'll do a workshop again, you know, in January before the budget hits them.
And I think that would be very useful for Jan as well, and constantly focus on training the clerk of the Assembly on these things, because in many cases, her being up to speed on all of this can be very helpful in, let's say, in guiding the members of the Assembly with regard to, you know, the nuts and bolts of this stuff.
She's doing very good.
I think she's been...
She's been great, yeah.
Yeah, she's...
I think maybe...
You know, everybody was saying, I mean, we all loved her, and she was there for a very long time, and we were just saying, you know, she's really...
I think maybe the goal, instead of say we provide periodic updates, we provide periodic reports. There's a report, you know, it's a little bit more...
We used to do that.
We do, we do do that. Where do you think these questions come from, Bill? This is what, how it plays out over there. So I send them over the end-of-month report, they look at it, they can't understand something because, you know, you'll have paid a half of year's bill, so on retirement, you paid the full year's bill on retirement, so that number is way out of whack relative to the quarter, you know what I mean? And so they, like you say, they get the vapors, and they, you know, and they go into a tizzy about, oh my God, look at that, we've over, we've overex...because, and I am sure this is what it is. We pay the full retirement assessment on July 1st. You know how you do that? Because we save, remember, you save money.
Right, exactly.
You save a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, whatever it is. Exactly, because of the time value of money.
Five percent discount.
But that shows up as a full payment against a one-quarter what you're supposed to spend, it's like 5%. All of a sudden, your numbers are all out of whack. But that's all it needs, is it needs someone to kind of say, you know, the reason it's all on whack is because of this number here.
So that suggests to me that at the time when these reports go over, that information that supports that should be given to us, so that we make our report over there.
Well, not only that, maybe once a month, you have to, you have to schedule that you're going to attend that assembly as, like, the week after you sent that information.
Yeah.
So you can say, look, last week I sent the information, if we have any questions?
Do you have any questions?
And it's all out in the open, and that takes care of it.
Yeah, that's a correct...
So once a month, you make that your time there, and everybody can have questions. And if they're, if they're fishing to make, you know, an issue out, you know, if somebody's got a hidden agenda somewhere, you can say, well, you know what, since that, I can come back and answer that question instead of dealing with it now.
In fairness to them, I don't think their agenda's been hidden lately.
No, but that's okay.
Do we have anything else we have to go over, get to this?
And that was the last page, I think.
Yeah, that's the last page.
But I think we now will have a discussion.
What I'm going to do is now I'm going to kind of coalesce what we sort of talked about here, and I will put this back together and send it back to you guys, and you'll have a chance to then come.
Right, and then, well, we'll get it together, we'll give you, give you our ratings so that you can make it into one evaluation, and then we can do it next week.
This is another question.
It won't happen next week.
It won't happen next week.
It will not happen next week, I can tell you.
Oh, okay. But before the end of the, maybe the end of the month. You know, last year, and I'm not sure if Paul did it, I'm sure he probably has done it, but we haven't seen it, he did an internal anonymous study, like through a Survey Monkey for employees, and I think that would be helpful for me, and probably even for you, Mark, because even though we assume everybody's, you know, hunky-dory, and people are more willing to share their true feelings if they're not feeling right, they've got their name attached to it. So, you know, there's that always that risk that you have a disgruntled employee, but it also allows more honesty.
I understand that, but what I found, that when we have talked directly to the department heads about how things fit in, I haven't heard any reason to do that.
I have. So I have, but I just think it's a useful tool. Number one, I think it's a good guide, I don't think you should be afraid of...
But we don't see who said what, you just see the results of what they are.
I understand that, I understand that.
So there's no personal...
And that would allow people to be maybe a little bit more open, and they're not, and we can set the questions, we're not out to, you know...
Are you talking about the Cape Cod Commission or...
No, I'm talking about having one for the administrator.
I would encourage you to do that for the department manager.
Yeah, I mean, all department managers, I think, would be, I think it would be a useful tool for them and a useful tool...
The Cape Cod Commission, they did a Survey Monkey for the whole population of employees.
Of employees.
And clients as well, outside.
In regards to the...
I don't think they did it for county, I don't, I didn't get one.
No, but they did it for clients.
I didn't get one, no, to respond about what the...
It was his commission staff that responded to how he was running the show.
Well, that would be interesting to see how that went countywide, that would be an interesting one, I have to say.
Yeah, that would be interesting, and he did do something that he was...
Okay, how do we decide, how do we get involved in this sort of thing?
Well, I think, first of all, get information on how it works.
I'm going to get information, by next week, I will have, I will have a proposal.
Elaine knows how to do it. She's done it.
Elaine has done it, yeah, but in terms of the detail as to what goes into it, I think that would be...
We can do...
Okay, so put that as an agenda item, because we have to discuss it.
Okay, next week, so I promised I'll have feedback, and I'll talk to Elaine.
Oh, the other thing, have we done this?
Performance evaluation is what it's...
I wanted to take up just under new business.
And I have something under new business as well.
Okay.
Well, you have to do your commissioner's actions.
Okay.
All right, I'll move the summary of actions.
Is there a second?
A second.
Do you have any opinion about any discussion?
Not for right now. I'll save it.
I do have another vote. Okay, well, first of all, we'll have a vote on this one. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so three out. You have another vote?
I have a vote to approve the holiday schedule for Thanksgiving, to approve a workday for November 23rd where offices will close at noon, and a skeleton day for Friday, November 25th, where offices will be open and staffed for normal business hours, but employees will either receive the day off or be given a day off within sixty days in the future.
So I would move that in accordance with past practice, that we moved those.
A second.
Okay, any discussion here, and then all in favor?
I, I do have something to say. I'm not going to be here the week of Thanksgiving. I'm not going to be here that week.
We're not meeting that week.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I should say that. So next week, we're going to do Paul's evaluation. You had something that you wanted for the agenda?
Oh, yeah. Well, under new business, I was going to, because of all of the attention to the subject that I've seen in the papers, I think it would be worthwhile to discuss the possibility of creating, because we have the power to do that, we have the ability to create an, a commissioner for advisory purposes for disabilities, and one for elderly, or either or, or both. We do have to vote to accept the acceptance in Chapter 34, Section 14A and 14B. I think it, because of the amount of elderly population that we have, and the amount of, and I think it's forty-three percent are disabled, it would be worth a discussion, just, you know, to decide whether or not that resides with us. And I would like to have Beth Albert included in that discussion if we, so, so I would like to propose that we have that discussion.
Does that mean appointing a special commissioner?
Yeah, we have.
We have, Bill, don't, haven't we done this before?
We have done it before, but we couldn't.
So you don't need to accept the statute. We've already done that. That's what I think you're saying.
So now the decision's to whether or not we want to, you know, resuscitate it.
So we need to talk about what the responsibilities of that individual would be. Is this without pay? Is this?
It's, it's without pay, there's no, and there's no, and they don't have a vote, but they act as an advisory for that specific purpose. If you read the statute, it's very clear as to what, you know, as to what their intent is, but I, but I think.
Well, maybe we should get a copy of the statute.
I think you sent it to us, didn't you? Did you send it to us?
I believe I did. I sent the reference, but.
Yeah, your reference.
But I thought that Beth should be part of that discussion.
I agree.
To see whether or not we're already meeting that, meeting that responsibility, or whether or not we have to add some special emphasis in order to emphasize it.
I know we had a person doing it a while back.
Yeah, we did. When was the last time I saw you?
I think that person passed away. I think that's what happened.
There were two people, and the other one didn't pass away.
I said the only one.
Somebody from, actually, one from Harwich. They're all the way around. Okay, there was one other thing I had under new business.
No, I have just have to chat, I don't know if Beth's available next Wednesday, so we'll find out.
Yeah, we'll check up.
But anyway, I think it's, I think it's worthwhile looking at and discussing because it is an important issue. Now, I have taken an initiative and scheduled town service reports for these towns for these dates.
Yeah, I have now. I brought it with me.
Okay, thank you.
Because that's what I wanted to bring up was this.
Okay, and, and the reason why I went ahead and took the initiative was that at the first meeting with special commission, Florence Selden made the point of saying how important it was that we delivered these service reports to the towns, as well as when Bud Dunham gave his re, his report about how, how Sandwich viewed was great importance, but what we've done. There has been a turnover with regard to. Boards. And I think, and I've always found it, it was a great opportunity to ask the question with regard to, this is what we've been doing for you in a, in a summary way, and let both the Board of Selectmen and the fact that they are taped, let the community know that we're not just, you know, sort of behind stone walls and, you know, and Bonsell. Anyway, I've cut these schedules so far, and she will have the town reports, and they will be available to us within the next week, that, you know, the Kara's Assembly will. What was your question?
No question about this schedule. No, I was just looking at this. Well, what I wanted to know is, we should really be very clear about what we're going to do when we get there.
Well, my.
And the first meeting is November 21st, which is like what?
Two weeks from Monday.
Two weeks from Monday.
I am making, or suggesting that we make a report on the specific services that we've provided to that town. That usually takes about ten minutes, as far as the summary.
Well, if we're giving them the report, why don't we ask them if they have any questions about it?
We could ask them.
Instead of, I mean, are we, we're sending them the report and then we're going to talk about it when we get there?
We're sending the report, and what I had done in the past, when I've led these discussions, is just give a, a quick summary in terms of, we've given you, there have been eighteen instances where Children's Cove has provided services in the town, and do, and do the numbers part, mainly to emphasize to both the Board of Selectmen and the constituents that we are providing a significant level of services to the community.
Here's what I would like to suggest. You live in Harwich, I live in Thelma. Why don't we ask our boards of selectmen what they would like to hear from the county commissioners? We're going to be sending you the report, you're going to have it in advance, and what would you like us to talk about when we come?
Yeah, we want to just read it out loud, although that doesn't look good for everyone else.
I don't want to really go through a bunch of statistics.
We, we haven't done that ever.
Yeah, we have. I remember.
That was, I think that was.
Oh, yeah, I remember there were times where.
And then everybody, yeah, I mean, some people appreciate it, but everybody does.
But when we did it a couple of years ago.
No, they don't.
We didn't do that at all.
Yeah, they don't. They really don't.
They rolled the dice.
We made a presentation of our own.
Yeah.
About not to do the services, but we made.
We gave them that, and then we just discussed.
And then we talked about the issues that we wanted to communicate with them about.
Right. No, I agree.
I mean, I think, and it may be it's different for each town.
You know, they don't want to waste their time. I mean, I, I get what you're saying. It gives us, it gives us a, you know.
Visibility.
Some visibility, and anybody that's, that's listening, I understand that. But, you know, they've got their agendas, they're trying to get through these things, they're, you know, we just come along and it's like, you know, we just do this.
Each of us, each of us have, have an opinion as to what comes across. So each of us can decide what part of the presentation, what kind of a presentation you want to make. I agree with the idea, right? I'll talk to Harwich.
Yeah, well, let's put it on our agenda next week. Talk to the, you know, talk to the towns, and then let's come back and see what would really be a good presentation. What do they want to hear about?
I'll talk to Harwich.
If you, if county commissioners were coming to speak to you, what would you really like to hear?
The county commissioners are coming to speak to you.
Yes.
What do you want to hear from us?
What do you want, what would you like to hear?
On agenda.
Okay.
Well, I have a problem with a couple of those Mondays, but I might be able to work something out.
Well, you can split it up too.
Yeah, I probably can't do Eastham or Beaster, but I can do all the others.
Okay. But, but in any case, I would like to get this done by, you know, by the end of the year because this is even a personal objective of mine.
Okay.
Well, you're not going to get all fifteen done by the end of the year, Bill.
We still have six more towns to go.
Yeah, but there's, yeah.
We'll be seeing.
Hit some of the agenda.
We haven't got Bonsell on here yet, have we?
Oh, they don't want to hear us. What happened? I think you can see the paper.
Oh, yes.
By the way, that was one other thing, one other thing on new business. We should send a letter of congratulations to those who succeeded in election. There are, there are several new people, and.
Which elections?
In Bonsell.
Town election, I had that yesterday.
Oh, town elections.
Yeah, Ann Kennedy, I think, will reelect.
Got reelected. I thought you were.
And there's another issue with regard to the Bonsell Village Association, and that's, you know, it'll be coming up.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we have to follow up on that.
Yeah. Their annual meeting is the fifteenth. Unfortunately, I have a Yama Board of Selectmen meeting where you got to take my compact that night, so I wouldn't be able to go to it.
I can go. I already said I would go.
I do too.
You said you're going to.
All right, I got to.
No, do you have anything else on this? You're going to come back to us with a, to coalesce what we talked about?
You're going to send that to us.
Send it to me.